So next, we have a couple of information items. The first is the superintendent update, summer facilities update, and back-to-school highlights. Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Johnson, trustees, members of the community. Mr. Latsana is coming to share an update from the Capitol Project work over the summer. As you all know, we had nine schools engaged in major projects. We appreciate the work of the bond committee and the finance committee and all of the trustees last spring to prepare for a big summer of Capitol improvements. Mr. Latsana is going to walk us through a general overview. And then, we've got, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. So then, we're going to share some photos. And trustees, I know the bond committee is aware. We're preparing for a big fall report on our progress with the bond. So that will be coming in October, November timeframe. So just think of this as the first of three installments, really to update on our community, on our progress. And we never want to talk about the improvements to our buildings without beginning with the gratitude that we all have to our community for supporting our schools and our school buildings and making sure that they are updated. Our buildings average 65 years of age. And over the decades, had fallen in behind in the repair, in maintenance and upkeep. In addition, many of our buildings were on air-conditioning. So over recent years, the community supported both the increase to the sinking fund. And then, secondly, in 2019, the passing of the bond. And so, it is these funds, the sinking fund and the bond, that allow us to plan for such immense work across the district. Mr. Emile Latsana oversees all of that work. Trustees with COVID, labor, supply shortages. And then, just as a bonus, in August, an electrical outage that fell right across those critical days as we were preparing for back-to-school. And two of our trustees were without electricity for over a week. So I think that is very familiar. But at any rate, it was a summer of challenges. And yet, we're delighted to bring this initial report, Part One of three parts, a report on our facilities update. Mr. Latsana?
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Good evening, trustees, Ann Arbor Public Schools community. We are pleased to provide an initial report. And again, we will have a fuller report later in the fall once we do all of our tabulations and calculations and all of that. But we'll have some pictures of the work in a minute. But I just want to share that this is the largest construction mobilization in the school district in many, many years. Once we tally this up, we believe that we've expended over $40 million of sinking fund and bond funds. As a point of reference, in the last few years, with a sinking fund, our summer construction has been more in the order of magnitude of $15 million. So we're three times, thanks to the generosity of our community, the work that we're able to do in a summer mobilization. In addition to the nine projects, as part of those nine projects, we're pleased to report that three buildings now have full air conditioning, Mitchell, Dickon, and Lakewood. And we have air conditioning now on the third floor of Community High School, which is one of our chronically overheating spaces. I've been in there prior to the air conditioning in September. And I walk out with basically a drenched, wet shirt. So I'm really pleased that we're able to do that. We'll have six more buildings coming online with air conditioning next summer. We have had some supply chain and labor issues that have slowed some of the work. In particular, electrical gear has been something that's been challenging. And as Dr. Swift mentioned, we had that power outage in the middle of August, which fell right when we were trying to do some power upgrades at buildings. And that pulled the DTE resources that we needed away from some of our projects. But we're hopeful that we'll get all of the electrical gear and equipment and the availability of the resources to install it over the months ahead and connections next summer. In addition, there were two paving projects at Allen and Dickon, two roofing projects, a completely new roof at Bryant Elementary, as well as a roofing section at Huron High School. And four significant solar projects were completed this summer at Haisley, Steam, Huron, and Forsyth. We also had two masonry restoration projects, one at Tappan that will continue into next year, and then, one at Scarlet Middle School that was completed, mostly completed this year. We also had two emergency stormwater repairs, one at Carpenter Elementary and one at the Thurston Pond, which were successfully completed. And we've got some pictures of all this good work. And I think, once Ms. Osinski hits click, we should just roll through this and enjoy the show.
Thank you, Mr. Latsana and President Johnson, trustees. Again, thank you for making sure that we could have this bond and sinking fund, and thanks to our community. It is Wednesday, September 22nd, our first board meeting since the opening of school on August 30th. All right, so in Week Four, it is and staff, and they are in our schools together, getting about the fall rhythms of being back to school. Certainly, being back to school with COVID presents many challenges. And yet, we are inspired by this fall '21 return. I want to go through some components, trustees. You've all been briefed on this. We've discussed it. But I just wanted to chat about these things publicly so that we could share more with our community about how things are going. First, I want to thank our students who've returned joyfully, and they're working beautifully. Trustees, I'm very careful about my school visits now, of course, because we all have to be extra careful during COVID. But I see them from a distance, and they are wearing their masks in their learning, and they're taking care of each other. It's a wonderful time. I have so much gratitude for our teachers, our support staff, and our leaders who have pivoted now for a fourth time since March of the beginning of COVID. And I know how hard it is to have school open with all of the extra requirements of COVID. And yet, the teachers are joyful, and they're stepping up to do all of that work. I want to thank our parents and our families and our community. We have community members here with us this evening. The support that's been extended from our community around our school teams is just inspiring. I'd love to share more of those stories. There are just so many of them that are inspiring. I was over at Ann Arbor Open the other day and saw a beautiful area of benches that the parents just got together and put in outdoor space. And it's beautiful, right under the trees. The kids can enjoy that and will enjoy it for many years. That story is replicated many times over. I heard the other day about a parent who ran by the transportation office and brought several dozen donuts to the bus drivers who've had an extremely hard time over these three weeks. So I could go on with those stories. But we just want to thank our community and our parents for all of their support. I want to work through our current COVID, Ann Arbor Public Schools surprise to you, but we need to set out some of those realities from that perspective of having three weeks back in schools. So we know a lot more now than we did at our last board meeting in August. The current reality is that the pandemic continues. Our students under age 12 are not yet able to receive vaccination, although we had some hopeful news last Monday that perhaps that will come here in a few weeks. What that means for us is that 21 of our 31 locations are populated by majority unvaccinated individuals all together inside of the building. That is a unique challenge that school districts face. We remain at high levels of community transmission in Washtenaw County. And today, trustees, we are at 24 cases reported in the district since last Friday. So each case, our nurses and our school health team and Ms. Bacalor supporting, each case requires a minimum of three hours of stop, drop, and work through the process. And some cases require a lot more time than that. So if you do the math on that, you realize how very hard our team is working. We see that we are experiencing some escalation in cases this week over our previous three weeks of data. In the midst of these realities, we continue to take very seriously the responsibility for the health and safety of our students and staff in our schools. The focus now during September and October is very straightforward. And that is to strengthen and stabilize this fall school opening. We will continue to shore up this opening to make sure that we can keep folks healthy and safe while also addressing labor shortages that have resulted from COVID and other challenges across the system. So this is a time of challenge and opportunity. And I want to explore some of the areas of challenge, trustees, so that we can just set out where we are in this process. Our students and school teams are following the Super Six. And I'm not saying they're perfect. But when I'm in schools, I'm very confident of our mitigation strategies. We are notifying school communities of cases right away. Notifications were going on as I was preparing to drive to this board meeting this evening. So that is going on literally around the clock and through the weekend. Folks are working on that. We update the COVID dashboard one time each week on Fridays. And that includes all of the data up through the prior Thursday. The guidance around quarantine, testing, and other protocols continues to evolve. So we are working in collaboration, as one of our speakers referenced, with Washtenaw County Health Department every day. And we are updating that guidance directly to our AAPS COVID guidance documents. So that update is occurring real time as we move through these days. When we get an update, we are putting it directly in. Two recent adjustments, we shared with the community last Friday, but just pointing them out as a highlight. Two recent adjustments are the reduction of the number of days in quarantine to seven days. And the student needs a negative test on either Day Six or Day Seven for reentry on Day Eight. And another update, good for fall allergy season, is the elimination of the runny nose from the morning checklist. There's a big if, if that is the only symptom that a child has. So that is an adjustment. We want to share a huge shout-out for our AAPS nurse and health support team and Ms. Bacalor. They continue to work many hours through weekdays and weekends. Their focus on ensuring that case identification, contact tracing, and protocols happen consistently and timely. It is hard work, and they do it right alongside their regular duties of their health plans for so many of our students and providing numerous other supports in our schools. So that's our COVID update. I want to address our staffing shortages. Trustees, as we know, it's true with other school districts in Michigan and across the country. We continue to experience some staffing challenges. At this point, our classrooms are covered. So we do have classrooms covered, either with a teacher or with a substitute. And as I shared with you a few days ago, trustees, that number of classroom teachers was around 50. That has now come down a little bit. I noticed in yesterday's postings, I think I counted 35 postings. We do continue to experience resignations, not in any particular category, but across categories. So we are shorthanded in most positions across the system. Members of our school and district teams are interviewing every day, trustees, those new employee orientations. There are 25 or 30 folks in those every week. And we're bringing in lots of new talent into the district. We have purpose that we will not settle. We are going for good, strong talent. Late last night, I got an email from a beautiful, young special education teacher getting ready to graduate. And we're going to work with her right now. So we have her snapped up for joining our team later on. We appreciate the board's support to enhance compensation, trustees. We've been in this conversation since last spring. And week by week, we've been able to work through with our employee groups to get more categories of jobs increased, and especially those hard-to-fill positions. We are getting that enhancement in place here in the next few days that I've shared with you. Next week, Ms. Langford will be hosting a virtual Ann Arbor Public Schools job fair. We've never before done this in September. But we've experienced that changeover at the end of August that is unusual for this time of year. So we're going to host a job fair. And we invite all who may be interested or considering joining our Ann Arbor Public Schools to join us. And we have it as a banner headline on our homepage. So get over there and check out all the jobs that are currently posted. It is a wonderful time to consider working for the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Our critical mission is to serve children. I can't think of a more wonderful way to spend your energy in your life. And so, I hope anyone out there who is called to that kind of work will consider the Ann Arbor Public Schools. We are making some steps, trustees, in transportation. We're working to improve by aligning compensation there and offering additional hiring efforts. As you know, trustees, our transportation was staffed right up through about the third week of August. And then, we did experience some employee leaves and things that occurred that caused us to run. Trustees, on most mornings, it's between four and six routes out of our 94 routes that are running behind schedule. Now, this morning, almost every route ran behind schedule because of the terrible rainstorm. But most mornings, it's four to six routes. We are working with a process to notify our parents for the week. If we're consolidating routes, and we know that a certain area will run late for that particular week, we're going to consolidate and get those communications out so that parents can make arrangements. We do anticipate that we will be able to improve with our transportation. Ms. Liz Margolis, Ms. Joel Minnick, and the Durham team are working very hard, day and night, to get that improvement in place. Chartwell's Food and Nutrition has hired, I believe, a couple days ago, when I checked, they've hired 21 additional team members, trustees, since we were able to increase that hourly rate. And last I heard, she needs about another dozen to be fully staffed in our food and nutrition teams. So we are stabilizing that staffing issue for food and nutrition. However, as you are aware, trustees, food supply chain issues continue to be a challenge. And so, the menu changes often just based on what they're able to get. And we hope that that improves. They are using sources far and wide to mobilize as much and variety of food as we possibly can. I wanted to touch on back-to-school learning for students with specialized learning needs, students who are served on IEPs. This fall, 95%, approximately 2,200 students served on IEPs have returned to in-school, in-person learning. So most of our students have returned to in-school learning. The special education teams are thrilled to be back in our classrooms, engaging with students. As is customary, they're refining their service delivery schedules during these opening weeks. But I wanted to share with everyone that at this time, instruction, accommodations, related services are being provided according to student IEP plans. In very few cases where a staff vacancy exists, and we do have some of those, students are supported with professional support staff and with qualified substitute teachers if that is needed. Eligibility, initial and reevaluation processes for students will continue as they did before in our face-to-face environment and will be conducted according to high standards and legal requirements. Now, in addition, this year is a little different because throughout this year, our teachers and professional staff, IEP teams will have close eyes, monitoring our students. And they will work closely with them to understand any needs that may emerge. And in areas where identified, they will develop a plan to implement compensatory services. So that is an additional piece, just keeping close eyes on students and their development and growth during this year. We do have students, about 107, served on IEPs who are being served in our virtual village. The large majority of those are either in A2 Live at elementary, the synchronous program, or they're about 30 students in our A2 Virtual asynchronous in grades seven through 12. So, and those services are being provided through the homeschool. And they are working through those processes to clarify exactly how all of those services will be delivered. I wanted to give an update on our staff vaccination rates. We continue to have lots of hiring going on. So we will publish the report publicly once we get folks out and folks in from this hiring. But at this time, out of the approximately 2,100 Ann Arbor Public Schools staff members that are confirmed from across all of our schools, we are maintaining a 94% vaccination rate, fully vaccinated. That number represents most of our staff having reported. However, there are some moves in and out right now. And we want to continue to update this information throughout this hiring season and share with you a full report in just a short while. Our testing continues every Monday afternoon. And that testing is required for the few staff who are not yet fully vaccinated. And it is also available for other staff who want to just have this additional layer of support. What I hear from parents every day saying, "Tell me what I can do. I want to be of help. I want to support the effort." And there are really four simple steps is everyone who possibly can to get vaccinated. Secondly, avoiding time indoors with unvaccinated people. Thirdly, wearing our masks while we're indoors in public places. And then, finally, if your student has symptoms, please keep them home from school and get them in for a test. I know that is an extra burden on the family. We understand working families and the demands. And yet, by keeping your student home, you could be saving other students from catching and from spread. So that is the advice. I do appreciate that our parents are watching and really thinking about behavior beyond the school day. You know, a lot of times when we see these cases, they are being transmitted through social events, not necessarily at school. The last thing I was hoping to do this evening, trustees, and then we'll open for your questions, is just a few reminders. I don't mean to tell folks things they already know. And yet, I do believe there's power, trustees, in saying the current state of affairs. I think that's important. First is, it's important to remind ourselves that we're not back to school in the before times. This is a COVID-integrated fall season. Many of our students are not yet able to receive vaccination. And so, as you know, we continue on COVID management alert. We remain in an emergency status because we know how important it is to monitor the progress in our schools. So I appreciate everyone out there that is recognizing those rules of healthy engagement at school. And I hear from parents every day just wondering, "When can the drop-in lunch start again?" Or, "When might we be able to have that homecoming dance?" Trustee Baskett, you and I were talking about this, the homecoming dance indoors, you know? And you could name five other examples. Just a reminder to the community, we are not there yet. We're proud to be reopened, but we are not in the before times. There will continue to be some limitations for health and safety. Secondly, I just so appreciate, whether it's a bus driver, a teacher, a food worker, a school leader, I appreciate just remembering that our parents, our students, that folks have an elevated level of stress now. And trustees, we've seen it over these opening weeks of school. And I was so inspired on Monday evening to hear the PTO theme, PTO Council's theme for the year, and their theme is "Welcoming All With Respect, Compassion, and Integrity." I was so moved by that and appreciate these parent leaders understanding and reiterating that respect, compassion, and integrity will support our students, it will strengthen our schools, it will encourage productive relationships. And you know what? Someday, we'll be on the other side of COVID, and it's that respect and compassion and integrity that will help us when we get on the other side of this time. So the last thing I want to offer is, we really are encouraging that students and families and parents and our staff just have their backup plan ready. As one of our speakers spoke to this evening, none of us knows what could happen from day to day. We are encouraged, over the first four weeks, that it does not appear that there, we're not sure yet, but it does not appear that there is school transmission, and yet we know there are high levels of community transmission, and at some point, that community transmission may become school transmission. And so, we encourage everyone to have a backup plan, because at a particular moment, it could be the classroom your child is in, it could be the grade level, it could be the school, but there is always the possibility of a case impacting, or even a staffing shortage impacting our ability. We will continue to remain open, and so there's no big announcement here, it's just a reminder that we should all be prepared. During Week 4, we are having more cases than in prior weeks. We will continue teaching and learning, and there may be some necessary steps that occur in the interest of health and safety. We're going to continue to refine and improve our work together. Our mission, our critical mission, is to serve children, and I'm so grateful for our teachers and staff, for our students, for our parents and families, and for the support of this board as we work through this back-to-school COVID fall. Our schools are open, and this is a celebration. We don't want to lose that thought in the midst of all of our challenges. So trustees, I know that it wasn't the right time for all of us to be rushing through classrooms this fall, so tonight, we brought some classrooms to you. So if it's all right, we'll take a look at some of the back-to-school, and then we'll be happy to hear your question. Thank you.